Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Let's uh start out with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the public for which this thing is motivation. Do I hear a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? Second, any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Group of minutes, three twenty-four, twenty-five, and four two twenty-five, special meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those two meeting minutes?
Make the motion takes that three twenty-four and four, it's an two special meeting?
Are you a second? Second? Any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Hunter the road report?
We've received the new boom mower. Just waiting on insurance to really put it to work and um. We wouldn't have been able to use it today anyways. We were, we had this little. Lull out in a side of West Lake Road a few. Two weeks ago and we've just been waiting for things to dry up so we could go take care of it. So. Waste block retention wall there that I don't know how many years it's actually been there, but it failed and the edge of the road started. Caving down in and everything, so. We spent the day today taking care of that and. Looks pretty good. The culvert hopefully will last another ten fifteen years, so we don't have to dig it out in a couple of years, but.
Where is that?
This is on West Lake Road, just just beyond um Oxbow Bay. And we're starting to find some other. Issues. With the roads. That's a, it's about a three foot diameter hole and it probably goes down two, two and a half feet or so. This is on on Hill Ranch Road.
Did you stick that out there?
No, some people found that hole. People, audience, so you can get a good laugh. Yeah, they found this hole and they took some of that uh Japanese knotweed and stuck it down there. It's not a bunch of empty beer cans and. And stuck those on top of that, so. So after actually going out there and checking it, we found that there's a few other culverts. In this section of the road that are, that are failing pretty miserably as well, so that looks like. Our.
Are they on our list or replaced?
They were not on the list for this year, but they're now on the list for this year, so that kind of might push our. Intentions of doing a full rehab on Lewis Road a little bit further down the line. We've got some M R G P work to do this year, just a little bit of that, but um. We'll still get to Lewis Road, it just may not be as much as we had intended on, so. Might become multi-year project, but. And while we were out there taking care of that on West Lake Road today, the wiring harness caught on fire in uh Truck Six, which is the twenty fourteen. Uh international and now the truck won't dump, but I, I think it'll be a. You know, I don't know. I, I really don't know if it'll be an easier fix or not.
Can, can Nicky do?
I don't know. We, we just did a roadside evaluation, made sure that we didn't have to call these guys for the. The whole rest of the truck going up, so. But it does still start and run. You just can't use the dump bed for now, so. Other than that, I really don't have anything else at the moment. I think that's enough.
You're gonna get some, some more of that stuff on front side for those too.
Some more of the stuff on.
The culverts and the holes. There's a whole bit of it's getting real big.
And, and about the middle of the travel line area?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know which one you're talking about. Yeah, we're gonna, we do have to get some more cold patch, but we've been trying to button up some other. Other things.
We have culverts in stock to cover these.
So I, I keep, I do keep eighteen inch culverts in stock. That's the smallest diameter that you can use for across underneath a road for drainage. And I, we keep some twenty fours and a couple of thirties. I don't recall if I have any thirty sixes on hand right now, but. Uh some of the failed culverts are thirty to thirty-six inch.
Is this taking, make you increase that diameter?
Um. There's only one spot that I believe may be potentially a perennial stream, so I'll have to have. A and R take a peek at that, but the rest of them, it's basically just ditched.
How many culverts do you estimate?
Yeah, I'm spotted.
How long is this?
Yeah, um. I'm gonna say there's about five roughly in that, in the section of the road, five or six. This is, this is, if you're standing up at the ranch and you're gonna head back towards, holding back towards Finley Hall Road, they're all from the ranch down there to the. It's Finley Hall, so. Uh we've been, I guess I'll throw it out there real quick. Um we were waiting for the frost to be sure that the frost came out of the ground before we did our. First grade of the season and hopefully beginning of next week, we'll be able to, to hit that in between this. I, I realize the potholes are getting pretty ugly. We've been trying to do what we can uh to take care of that and buy some, some time, chancing making the road actually worse, so. That's on there.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Joel?
Thanks Joel.
Carol?
Is it possible to ask Joel one quick question?
Sure, most are.
Joel, is there any update on Route one forty with the possible closure on it in May for the repair job you're gonna have to do?
Yeah, so I don't have a timeline yet. I'm waiting to meet with agency and that for resources and the contractor. And establish an actual date at that point in time. Good question, actually, because um we're potentially gonna do a little work just, just around the corner from that as well. Where, I don't know if anybody noticed coming back towards town from Town Farm Road on one forty, that inside corner is kind of sloughing off and dropping. We're hoping that the contractor sends a, a good bid for, for. Doing some bank stabilization in that area as well and um. We may potentially, if, if that's a go ahead, we may potentially close that section for two weeks. Or announce that we're closing it for two weeks and get everything done while we're out there. Um, cause I think it would be a little bit more frustrating to close it for a week, pull all the equipment out of there. And then go right back in a few weeks later and then shut it all back down again. It's gonna be an inconvenience, so let's just get all.
Making a detour, because when we shut down one forty with that.
It would be Middle Town Springs to one thirty-three to East Wells Road.
About thirty miles?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, I haven't even recorded the mileage, but it's, it's, it's unfortunately significant.
The last time we closed one forty like that for the bridge. We actually on Saturday had our, had your guys take one of our dump trucks up to halfway point. So people could bring their, their um. Refuge into there and we brought it down to the transfer station.
Oh, yeah.
Because it was a real long, long haul for those guys, so.
Yeah.
And that was a courtesy we did. Um we may have to do that again if you're gonna be down two weeks. We may want to look at that.
I'm not sure how we'll, how we'll really get anything around it, to be honest with you, because that culvert's down pretty far. And the new culvert is, don't quote me on this, but I, I believe if memory serves, it's fifty-two by seventy-seven. Um, so it's gonna be a, it's gonna be shored back like fifty feet. There's gonna be like a fifty foot. Length hole in the ground there, so.
I'm just thinking about people trying to make it into.
Yeah.
On the, on the.
Yeah.
Transfer station day. We could help everybody else. I mean, the taxpayers, we can help them out while, while this is down a little bit.
Yeah. I can, I can see, I've been doing some uh discussing with. Party Avery's kind of been spokesperson on behalf of the conines for that, that land there since, you know, seeing as how the trail system goes through there and everything. I could see if we could potentially. Run a truck over that small trail that, that would kind of circumvent the obstructed area.
I think the idea would be you would just do the detour after the weekend or any of the garbage was bringing to the dome.
Oh, okay.
Have them drive. We'll go pick them. We'll be.
Pick a, pick a stand. Get for.
You know, come dump it in to our truck and then one of us will take it down. Cause you're gonna, you're talking three Saturdays. Three, possibly four.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Talking four weeks? I thought you just said.
No, that's Saturday.
Two, two weeks.
Two weeks.
We would. We would close it for two weeks with the hopes of being able to do it in a shorter time, but I don't want to tell people. You know, we think we can do it ten days and then turns into twelve days. So I would rather overshoot it and then. You know, open it pleasantly early instead of pose it for a short time, saying, hey, we got. We gotta make this count and hit it hard. Cause you, you don't really know where you're gonna.
Yeah. Into.
I mean, the instance you're talking about was a twenty-eight day closure.
Yeah, that was a twenty-eight day closure.
I think. I think people can survive. Two weeks. I mean, I have, I have a family of five and I don't go to the transfer station but every three weeks or so.
All right. You're very frugal. Okay, we'll see what happens.
So I'm still shooting for the middle of May, Carol. We're still going for second, the sec, I'd like to do second week. Being now that we're gonna do it for two weeks, because then that'll put us right into Memorial Day and I'd like to have it open, reopen before Memorial Day gets. That's the intention. Um and like I said, once, once we do that final meeting, we will put a message board out in the affected area. For both the eastbound and the westbound lane to observe for a couple of weeks prior to actually shutting it down. And I think we'll also put it on Vermont alerts and. The town's webpage and whatever other good ideas or whatever that anybody answers to. Spur.
Okay.
Word as best as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions for Joel?
Our signs are in. I'm excited to see them.
Your signs are in, yes. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Community development.
Uh so since we're talking about May, I'll start with Greenup Day. Um so Greenup Day is May third this year and um. The town has been receiving a lot of support again from Lake St. Catherine Association, from Jeremy Jones and Rotary. Um Ellen at Rotary has been helping us to, to kind of um pull together. Um, the Greenup Day. So everything is in the town office to come in and pick up bags and sign up. Um and then Lake St. Catherine Association, as they did last year, is also keeping an updated map online, so they can um. Folks are not in the same place as other people who have signed up. Um, we are going to set up a tent on the town green this year, just for a few hours from eleven to one on that Saturday. And we'll be having um hot dogs and like a little booth for Greenup Day um with Ace Hardware and Rotary is helping with that too.
Any sound required when the hot?
Um, it's probably just gonna be catching mustard.
Oh, really?
You're on. No, no.
You mean the green up here, correct?
Yes, yes, is that, yeah, this, this one right here. Um. And the high school has already, they notified me that they will be going out on Friday, May second in the afternoon, which is what they've done the past few.
Yep.
We've had a really great response the past few years for Greenup Day, so. Um, that information is out there. It's also on the town's website if anyone wants more information about that. Um. The, in terms of a project update, um the town was successful in putting together. A congressionally directed spending request to Senator Welch's office on March twenty-eighth. Um, I. Really like to thank Joel, who did a tremendous amount of work in getting letters of support from. All sorts of surrounding um highway departments. Um we ended up going to the TAC, to RRPC's TAC. And asking for letter of support from that um commission as well. So we had a lot of support. Paul was able to, to um. To reach out to legislators, so we had, I think upwards of ten letters of support for that. Um, so that was for, that is for the town highway garage, that request. It ended up being one point five million was the request. Um, it's highly competitive. Uh we, the only thing we've heard so far is that they got our application and I don't know. How long it takes to review those, but um I did review the other applications that were already on the website and there was. Upwards of thirty of them throughout Vermont for all sorts of different projects, so. Um, fingers crossed, we'll, we'll let you know just as soon as we know about that. Um, the town office building at one seventy-seven May is scheduled to kick off that project this week. The architectural firm is sending out um an employee to do um. A mock-up of the interior spaces, so they'll be doing, I think it's uh drone imaging of the inside. That's happening on Thursday. And. The only other thing that I wanted to share with the board tonight is really just like starting a conversation around communications. Um. Betsy, as the town clerk and Carol and I had um started conversations about social media in the fall. Um, and using Facebook to communicate with the um, with residents and with the community. Um. Recommendations from Vermont League of Cities and Towns is changing around that uh in terms of how municipalities use social media. And so we did a fair amount of research into um. You know, what that means, um how it's a public record and how we might have to care for it if we continue to use Facebook. And it is not, um, it's not something that we. Should continue doing at this time, I don't think, in terms of the town itself. Um, Facebook doesn't archive its information, so it falls to the municipality to keep that as a public record. So that is the reason that we stopped using Facebook and I am. Putting together a more formal communications plan with the help of the cha- uh chamber and then PDRC was helping with that as well. Um, but wanted the board to be aware that that's the status of the town's Facebook page and now that we have a new website, we have control over. That website, um and we have the new um. Um, state's information system, the VT alert system for anything that is more of an emergency system. Uh, we do, we can use Front Porch Forum because they do archive their, their posts on Front Porch Forum and make that accessible to communities, but. Um, at this time, we're primarily using the website, so as I have a little bit more time to develop that. With Betsy and the town clerk's office and the assistant clerk has been, have been really helpful. And kind of understanding what our responsibilities are for that. So just to put that out there, that is kind of a side project that I'm working on to develop that communications.
Okay.
Plan. So that's it. All right.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Any questions for Sarah?
Good job.
Before we go into uh town manager's report, should we, I see Aaron's here. Sure. What you got, Aaron?
So our activity reports have been for a little while for. January, February and March.
Were it wrong?
Okay.
It's true.
Been slow and busy and busy and slow and all the way around.
All the way around.
Thank you. Um. We have been uh out in the public a bit more. Uh we were able to attend Maple Fest. Been hanging out with the folks over at the kids' zone as well as we've been. Here near. A couple of things we do have coming up. Uh in May, if we have a farther on, well, so we had our annual banquet scheduled for one of the weekends. I was supposed to be atrocious. And the cancel it because we didn't want to be. You know. Having a little send it for ourselves and hoping that the uh paper gods would be quiet, so we did cancel that. Um, we did reschedule that for April twenty-fourth. In Walor, no, May twenty-fourth, sorry, May twenty-fourth, staying good on. May twenty-fourth, and you are looking invited again to that. Please come down and join us.
So that is, that's your cookout?
Yeah, and, and we'll bang, but yeah, people works and uh. Stuff like that for the members. And of course, just a meal first. All we've enjoyed and enjoying for this company. Um, the same as usual, we have. All the fire departments around the area covering for us, sort of listening to cover for us, so we can. All be together and enjoy this company and maybe a beverage or two together, so. Um, more in May, May the ninth, we'll be with the Ponte High School for a splint, spring flint, a little thing. Um, we're going to have a uh public education fire extinguisher trailer, uh prop trailer from the state uh that we're gonna be using. A little bit, the Tuesday before that, our monthly meeting night, I believe is this, that's. We're actually gonna have a, a community risk reduction training with the state as well, training on how to use that fire extinguisher trailer. As part of the community risk reduction training, we'll be getting supplied with a, another couple, three, four boxes of. Smoke detectors, combination CO detectors. Um, we have some that we carry. But uh with this training, the state's studying us a whole bunch more and teach us how to go and. You know, the public more and how to talk our ways through uh. Can we help you help yourselves by helping you with smoke detectors?
What does everybody get in terms of creative?
Community risk reduction. This state program that the. I would say the state got a safer grant through the National Lever stuff a few years ago and it's still money that they're using on. Trying to improve the safety inside of the communities of Vermont, so.
When is ours? Do you have a date?
So we're, well, so we're gonna go through the training on it on my, uh, May the sixth. So at the firehouse and then May ninth, we'll be doing the fire extinguisher thing with the high school students. Um, through their uh sprint flint thing that they do and then. Maybe if we get more into the summer, it'll be something we can catch into doing more of our outreach. Surely cookoff and stuff like that, maybe a trailer back down here for the general public as well as a uh. I think they have a trailer that you can do smoke detector installation kind of training stuff on, so. General public is not interested in having somebody else come into their house. We can actually teach them how to do it in this mock trailer, so. Stuff that we can hopefully work for this uh summer. Well, May the ninth, Glenn's got on his calendar too for the village as well, if not the days in or after. Insurance services offices will be out to check through our records and trainings for the. ISO rating for the town and the village on fire protection classification. What the insurance offices use for numbers, modification to do premiums for the commercial end is what they say it's for. Still a public number that. Everybody, anybody can grab and just see where. The town of Ponte, the village of Ponte stands on the national level as to fire protection services. Fifty percent of the rating comes from the fire department. The other fifty percent comes from the water supply system. So in the village. It's Alan Glenn and what pipes have been updated and all this stuff. They haven't been here since two thousand seventeen. There's a few things, hopefully that will help on his end. Hopefully on our end, we'll stay. Up the number, so. Um, last, we, in two thousand seventeen, it was a five for the village, five X for the town. The town does not have a hydrants water system. We do have an array of water sources that we call out as useful systems for us, so. Beneficial for that. That's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, anybody have questions?
I do. I want to thank you guys, because the rake that they put in the legion wouldn't have been possible without the help of fire department for those, your guys to go down there, check on it, help keep it level, help keep it, get a lot of use. And I know Dick and the Legion members appreciate it too. Kudos to you guys, made it possible. A lot of kiddos enjoyed it. Our skating party was a big success, so hopefully we'll go do it again. Yeah.
You didn't invite me.
Everybody was invited to a rec party. We'll skate next year, but thank you so much. That was great. Good teamwork.
Anybody have any questions for Aaron? Thank you, Aaron. Thank you guys for everything, for everything you do for us. Okay, town managers?
So, um, we had a little talk about the South Street Bridge project. At our last meeting, um, I circulated to the board, senior communications from. Uh Robert Kleinfelter, who's the um. Project manager from the state of Vermont. As far as the May recall, we discussed possible soil contamination. And um. What, whether we're gonna have it tested or not, um. You have it tested, you either have to have, and it, and it tests positive for lead or other hazardous contamination. The town either has to have a. Piece of property that they will maintain control over to store the material, or you have to pay to move it off site. Um. Initially, the first communication, and I hope you guys had a chance to read it. Indicated that there would be approximately three thousand cubic yards. That will not be, that will be excavated and will not be reused on site. Um. I had a conversation with Robert, or Bob, I should say. After that and said, is that, are you telling me that we're gonna have to. That potentially we could be talking about three thousand. Cubic yards of contaminated material. He followed up and while, you know, it's all, all estimates. Um, based on other similar projects. They're roughly estimating three hundred cubic yards of soil that may be potentially contaminated. With lead. Um, again, that's just an estimate. It could, that could be way high or way low. Um. So I think we have to have a conversation because it's at this point. Um. We're gonna have it tested. The state is part of their, is part of the um. Initial uh. In this early stage, we'll arrange to have it tested, but we have to be prepared to. If it does test positive for lead or other hazardous materials, we gotta have, have a game plan. Um, so thoughts?
We have two choices. We have to keep it somewhere in our property here or ship it out. Either way, it's gonna be super expensive.
Yep.
Well, if you store it on the property, it won't be expensive until you move it.
You have to have property to store it though, right?
Depends on, yeah, depends on three thousand cubic yards. I don't think we can store that.
I know.
But then again, we can't move it because that's, that's an astronomical number. Um.
Well, it's gonna have to be moved from there somewhere.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be.
It's just, the thing is, is. What do we do?
Well, if, if it's three hundred square yards approximately. Back to the fire department. There is that nice cement pad. So that's just one option.
And we did a. Can, who do they use? Do you, do they use Clean Harbors for a?
I, I don't know.
We, we would need, we would need a kind of an estimate on a cubic yard hazardous waste, what it would cost. To, to get it offsite and just get rid of that so that they can take care of it. It's three hundred cubic yards, maybe. We may have to store it either way someplace until we can budget that money in. But it's gonna really depend on how many cubic yards we're gonna be storing.
Right, we don't know what that number is in total.
The first thing we gotta do then is get a test.
Once you test it, you gotta do something about it.
Does the state, what does the state recommend on it? Do they recommend testing?
Sounds like it from this to that, I've read a few times.
Now, I mean, I, I think it's, to remind the board that because of the nature of this bridge. Uh, and the historic preservation easement on there. Um. It's the, the pre-engineering in, in the um. You know, the construction will be. Are supposed to be born uh eighty percent federally and twenty percent state. Um, this cost that we're talking about is. Outside of the scope of that and so that would be borne completely by the town. Um. And I don't know. Can't remember if I sent you. This is a, the. This is an eleven and a half million dollar. Bridge project.
Mm-hmm.
Which.
That works, huh?
Yeah.
It probably was a bargain.
Yeah. It was. So, I mean.
So what we need to make, to make any decisions is that we need to know the price, the price fee, you know, from the collective as well. And um. That way we would have, have a, a chance to discuss it.
Are we held liable for it if we don't have it tested?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we have to have a test.
I mean, if, if you, if you moved it to a different site, it's not controlled by you, but when I say you, I mean the, the town. And it is contaminated.
We are liable.
Liability follows. The town. Um, that's why the, the other, only other option is you have a piece of property that you always gonna have. And always be, have the control of. Uh, if you don't test it, so.
Is there, is there, this may be a stupid question, but if it's, is there a level of contamination? Is it like a high level, low level, like where you put it?
So that's, that's a thing, that's a thing that um, there used to be, according to the um. The Structures Project Manager Bob. They just, the state just changed the, the, made it, made it more stringent, like. On the eve of this project getting ready to go out to bed.
Well, of course, why wouldn't that happen?
Um. And that, and that's, you know, that he felt bad that it's just being sprung on it, on the town now. Um, but on, there, there apparently there wasn't a concern about it prior to that, um. Um, but, um, there, apparently there wasn't a concern about it prior to that, um, standard being. Uh, changed.
Because on some of the, I mean, and maybe Sarah, no, too, Sarah, on some of the Vermont website, they did have. Um, companies that would take care of, but there, I think there were levels, cuz some of it, they said they could use, I asked, I talked to you about, like for paving, if it had certain. Level of contamination, they could heat it up and use it for paving somewhere. So I don't know, just say, I just read part of it, I looked on like, oh, what that really means. Um, so I didn't know what the level of contamination mean, could it be heated and used for something, or can it be?
I mean, we're talking about soils, so I don't know how you would use that for pavement.
I, that's why, I didn't, I didn't bring the whole thing with it, but I was just kinda looking to see what the. Website said, if there are any grants or anything to help that with contaminated soils and size them out.
Size wise, that's approximately twenty of our dump trucks. Just to kinda give you.
Three hundred cubic yards.
That's fifteen yards.
And that's, that's just a guess, doesn't it?
Yeah. But so my, my experience with contaminated soils, with, with most of oils. Once you, you get through the first, first, that's where most of it is, it, it's sort of, it's on the crusts. It, it doesn't go real deep.
They have to dig it so many deep, I know that when, a place over here had, it had to be.
Right.
Yeah, dug out deep enough, even though there were no, there were no traces of it.
Right.
Well, the plan, we gotta come up with a plan.
They said I gotta estimate on the high and the low end, but I can't hurt of it.
That, that would be the first thing, you need to know the dollar amount, cuz we're getting, we're kinda getting blindsided.
I mean, you.
I mean, this is the twelfth hour and we gotta come up with.
You know, I don't know if you call a company and say, if it's three hundred versus, can you give me a number, I don't really know how, this is.
We are gonna know until, until they get into it. We need to know a, a number to, you know, how much a cubic yard for contaminated soil with lead. Is to get rid of, to dispose of. Um, how long can we, if we have twenty tandem loads, can we put it down? And in one of our, on our town site someplace and store it, how long can we store it for? Cuz this is, we don't have money to get rid of this, we just, we need to budget for this.
Um, there is, the Brownfields program, DEC's Brownfields program, is taking applications for new projects. Um. I think if you move the soil, soil to a different site, you just play on site, that you would then have to, then the problem becomes on that site, right? So like in the future, you have to, you'd have to figure out a way to deal with that site, so if you were to. Think about where to put it, it makes sense to put it on a site that is already constrained, because you probably would have to do that research and study anyway. And then you, then you would apply to the Brownfields programs, at some future date to remediate whatever has been.
You'd have to put in a containment holding.
Yeah.
So when we had the Fennel Hollow, there's that incident a few years back, if you all remember. That went on, I believe it was a six mil poly, and it was just purchased from hardware store, and it was just pinned to the ground. I don't, I don't know that the contaminant process or if that's acceptable for different contaminants, I'm not.
See, we need to find this.
But I could, I could reach out to a couple of the contacts that I was in with during that whole thing, cuz I believe that. Fabian held it there, we helped, and then I believe Fabian was the one that removed it from the temporary storage area. To the actual disposal.
If we store it, where is a place on that town, the town owns for property? Big enough to put potentially twenty tandem loads. Um.
We have to give them an answer at, at.
I mean, I, I think so, they're rather than later.
Yeah, we gotta, they're gonna start.
Maybe it's something we should take the time and just research a little bit, look at companies and see what we, some of our choices are, find out what it is.
First off, we're gonna find out if there's lead there.
That is heavy, so it sinks.
Since then, the state can say, can do that, be more stringent on it, but yet they have no help, support out there.
So how do we, how does the board feel about testing it first to know what we're up against, Alan?
Yes, best of it also be reaching out to places to find out what the cost would be.
Same way, Mark?
Yes.
Now?
Definitely.
Cheryl? We'll get it tested and reach out to see where we can store it if it's. If it is contaminated. Um, then we really need. A price, a, a per cubic yard.
I mean, when we were just having this conversation, I did a quick. Google search and it's. Most of the stuff I'm saying is by tonnage. Hundred and fifty to four hundred fifty dollars per ton.
I mean, like a one ton truck, is that what that means?
A ton of material.
That's material, how much did your tandem hold, how many tons?
Uh, when it's fully loaded, it turns out to be about eighteen tons of.
Eighteen tons times.
Load, that, that's just the load in the truck.
Yeah, times, you said something up to four hundred and fifty?
I mean, that's what I, internet search just told me.
Yeah, well, that's just.
Maybe you should just get it tested and then get that information together for next time and get.
When it's wet, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
It's a lot of money, we can't put it in your truck and then use your truck again, right, we couldn't use our town. We can't do that.
That, that, that's a lot of money. Twenty tandem loads, that. That's not funny.
No, nobody would.
That's, that's, this is not cool, we, we have to get it tested, see what we're up against. Hate getting caught, I hate getting blindsided. Not real happy, I always try to be proactive, and this is something that we got caught on. That's nobody's fault, it's none of our. Alright, so we're, our plan so far to start with is we'll get it tested, correct you guys?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So you get an. Idea of where we could store and how to store. Potentially twenty tandem loads of it, do we lay a bed of plastic down? Do we have to make a containment for stormwater runoff? What do we need to do, we gotta find this out, you can cover it.
And see if these programs, they'll have it, so they take it and we pay so much or whatever, I don't know, like there, there were two programs, Brownfield, well, I. That maybe there's a program that they come, they take it, and then we have to budget it for so much at a. A time, so it's not here, but that's at a different, they take it right away, we just have to pay it slowly.
Oh geez, this is, this makes your hair turn white, things like this.
Okay. Um. The other thing, just so the board knows is. Um. He, uh, Bob had also asked me about, uh, two options for the underneath of the bridge. Whether it be, um, painted or galvanized, um. I think I talked to you, Jeff, about it, and. That, that he needed an answer on before this meeting, so I went ahead and told him to do galvanize.
Galvanize.
On the underside of it, um, you won't see it unless you're under the bridge, or if you're. Looking at a profile of the bridge from like, you know, in a river or something.
No, I'm stupid about this, but can you tell me what, what's the big difference between galvanizing paint, you never have to paint, you galvanize, goes into the steel, does that really?
It's a type of steel, yeah, it's, it's more rust resistant.
It's hot dipped, it's very good.
Hot dipped.
Hot dipped. Yes, that's the only type of carbonization that really works very good.
And it lasts a lot longer than paint.
Yeah.
But the, the East Polley Bridge is painted, right, not galvanized, just wanna make sure.
That's a lot they're up off the water, though.
Just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Um, I have a note on here, the zoning administrator, um, he's, he's the. He started, um. He's assisted on a couple of projects, um, he's researching. Currently, uh, alleged zoning violation, um. So I don't have his computer set up here yet, but we did have a meeting. Here last week and discussed a couple of projects that are currently underway. And some projects that when he gets on board are gonna be, um, on his desk. Um, so probably at some point, um, he's gonna get, he's gotta get sworn in with the clerk. And at some point, I might bring him in, just introduce him to everybody, um. Um. I have some liquor licenses that Betsy asked me to. Uh, present to the board. Uh, the Polley Pub, first, third, and outside consumption. Toad's Burgers, first, third, and outside consumption, uh, the new, um.
Diesel station.
No, you're, uh, I think you did taste the station already, the, the gentleman who, um, owns. Bruno's Fat Times, uh, is putting, is went in front of the DRV boards. To seek, um, permission, a zoning permit to put in a beer, um, store there. Uh, the DRV is in the process of writing up its decision, um.
So they're gonna be proactive on that liquor license?
Yeah, he's gonna have second class license and tobacco, and tobacco substitute, um, license.
Right.
That means he can only sell craft beer and wine, right?
Yeah, he's, he's planning on selling, uh, craft beer and wine, I believe.
Okay, we hear a motion from the board to approve those liquor licenses, present it to us?
Sure, I would make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Your second, any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Originally, um, someone who was complaining about, uh, feral cats, had asked to be on. Uh, tonight's agenda, but says that they couldn't make tonight's meeting, um. So plans on coming to our next meeting. This person lives in the village and, and. I was working with them, uh, she was trapping the, the cats, and I was bringing them to the Humane Society, and the Humane Society. Asked me to stop bringing, um, feral cats there. Um, and. So just, it's on the horizon that she's gonna be here, and I'm just gonna give the board the heads up, cuz essentially. The Humane Society told me the best policy is, is to, uh. Leave the feral cats in their community.
Don't feed them.
Actually, they, they said that the best policy is that someone in the neighborhood feeds them.
I got some.
Um. And the alternative is euthanizing them, because the Humane Society tells me if you remove them outside of their. Community. They try to find their way back to the community, and, you know, more times than not, they, they probably. Get run over or.
But they also keep multiplying.
Right.
They don't take it to the.
So I, I can tell you as an animal control, I, I have no interest in, like, in being party to, uh. Euthanizing program, so.
I, I wouldn't like that either.
Oh, does, does Polley still sponsor a spade?
Yes.
The program?
They did, they, they do two or three, and Polley Band does, free rate, uh, rabies.
A new one?
They just had one, yeah, she just had one.
I don't know if, I don't know how, I don't know if it's, I don't know how that works, I'm not, that, that's not part of.
Do you know, Cheryl?
I do know, cuz I asked her about it, because, um, it was brought up and, um, they did, I asked her about the clinic, and she did do a couple clinics for rabies. Cuz I know people that went to it. They did rabies, and I think she does do one for Spady News, I don't know if that was like a.
How many federal councils are they talking about?
Uh, I mean, according to this.
Yeah, I mean, what, it, it was not. Dig in our garden, and, uh, keep a cage in our garden for over here.
What are you talking, twenty, thirty?
Thirty, forty, there's a lot of them, they keep, that was a season. One house had, like, thirty five cats.
Oh my goodness. Sorry?
One home has like thirty cat cats. I know my neighbor has cats too, and they just keep multiplying cuz they don't get.
Alright, so that's on the, that's a heads up.
Um.
You got thinking caps on that one.
We're still, um, did your computer get installed?
It did.
Does it work?
Thursday, yeah, I haven't had much of a chance to really try it out, but.
We'll email for you, nice.
Yeah, we transitioned the new emails, there's, there's still a few bugs that. Um. Our IT people are, that need to work them out, but, um. What about yours?
Um, Monday.
Yeah, next Monday?
Next Monday. You feel good about it, Paul, may you like you?
Um. You know, change is sometimes difficult, but.
So understand.
Is it quicker or faster?
Um, not really, in fact, they recommended that, um. We, I guess, change whatever the, we have here to tra- faster speed. I think Betsy was looking into, you know, Carol?
She was looking into that, oh, yes, because they, yeah, you're correct, they are slow.
Is it fiber optics?
I think what they were actually talking about is switching from Comcast and switching to something different.
Right, but, but don't, we don't forget, we, only is eligible for one free hotspot, one free drop. For fitting five, three.
It's no longer used for one of these Polley stores, for that used to be a hotspot.
I mean, you're talking about a hotspot, I think we're talking about.
For one drop, no, for one, if, if I misuse my, my words.
Fiber optic drop?
Yeah, yeah.
But you can't.
The CUD thing, that, but we, we, we talking about.
Right, that's different than them having their wifi for here.
No, no, that's the same thing.
We're talking about hotspot means anybody can use it.
No, no, he's talking, he's, he missed, he misuses the word, he's saying that CUD will give Polley one free. Ha, of drop for fiber optics, so we could have a.
So maybe I should talk to.
Empty all the fiber optics here.
You all.
Oh, talk to that guy?
Yeah.
Okay.
He just was putting it in the East Polley, um, church today.
Then, then you would have a lot, uh, uh, the capacity for a lot more speed.
Chris, the church, I just went there today, and they were, that's originally what, that would be a great hotspot, and he's putting it.
Look into that, it's not a hotspot.
No, no, but we were talking about, when they took the East Polley hotspot away, could it go in the, maybe the Baptist church? Could they use it, but the church is now putting in, today they started putting in there. Putting in, so they're putting a fiber office, and he was putting it downstairs and putting it in today, so it will be one for one, people wanna go, or. It will be, they'll have it down, so they'll be.
Let's jump out the fiber optic drop here, if, uh, CUD can put one in for us free, maybe we can get that. See, I misunderstood that.
It wanted fiber optics for everyone to use, like a hotspot or just to give to the town.
Then you can hook them up modem and, and really help a, a few hundred people.
Yeah, about three hundred, I think you can help.
Yes.
That's it, cuz we don't wanna be on, they don't want everybody to be on there.
We'd have to be in on a guess, but then with fiber optics, it doesn't bog you down.
But you have one, um, contracts matter that, or executive session as well.
Okay, anything else, Paul?
Uh, not at the moment, no.
Uh, next month, next meeting, we, uh, we gotta get on the agenda about the rail trail.
Oh, yeah.
He wants to come in and, and the one, the person that we appointed to oversee our rail trail for us.
Nick.
Yes, he wants to come in and.
No.
Not Nick.
Philip.
Philip. He wants to come in and give a presentation, I told him we'd get us, we'd get him on the agenda every year, okay?
Yeah.
As acting the other law, also like board business?
Um, I did wanna mention that, um, I don't know if people saw. The news last week, um, where the federal government has retracted brick funding. Uh, uh, if you recall this Tressel Bridge study, that we, um, are sixty-three percent through. Um, was it brick project, is it brick project? As of now, the state, because it's already, uh, underway. The state has advised me as of, at least as of last Friday, that, that project will, will continue to be funded.
Oh, good. When do they plan, any idea when they're planning on putting a shovel in the ground or, or what they're going?
Down here?
Yeah, what one they're gonna use?
Well, we had a meeting with, we had a virtual, Sarah and I, uh, had a virtual meeting with this. Some of the state players, some folks from the RRPC. Uh, the engineering company. Getting ready to do, uh, cost benefit analysis, uh, because it. You can't demonstrate that the cost versus the benefit way, way out properly.
Justification.
They won't, they won't go the next round, um. The state. You know, the state, the state, the rail trail folks from the state. Uh, didn't seem super receptive to doing anything, um.
They want you to be proactive for a catastrophic flood event which we're having, but they won't do anything about that.
I don't know if, I don't know if their reaction was mainly driven by, um. Lack of funding, lack of budget funds for.
Yeah, what we chose was not cheap.
It didn't seem as though DEC wanted, they, they wanted the planning report though, there was interest in. The approach the town's taking, being proactive and, you know, at one point they did say we haven't done a lot of. Looking at these types of things from this perspective, it's more after the fact type, type thing. Um, so they do want the planning report.
Okay. Alright, so wait, wait.
I did, um. I did file our local hazard mitigation plan. And, as, as I told the board, um, Billy Jones was a big help on, in putting that together. Cause usually every year I do it. You know, what, usually, particularly when you'll do it once a year, you're kinda like stumbling around like, how do I do this again?
Oh, I know. Invaded US and the word I forgot to, the plan was approved at the state level, so it's also.
Oh, great, good, thank you.
Thank you, they can, thank him for us too.
And then, you, you and I are still.
Who is?
Still the team, right? Um, sorry, that's all I had to front or, other business.
Okay. Rattlin Regional Planning Commission?
Um, the regional commissioners haven't met since the last select board meeting, the next meeting is tomorrow. Uh, the TAC did meet, um, as I mentioned previously, we. Asked for letter support, spent some time talking about the Towns Highway Garage Project, it was nice to be in that forum talking about it. Um, and then Ethan Peppin, who's the transportation planner, gave the TAC an overview of the Mad River. Mad Marble Valley Regional Transit District, the bus, um, talking about essentially. How it's structured, how it's, it's operational budget, um, there's some route consolidation in Rutland City. Um, Ethan described a bit about the older adults and persons with disability transportation program. That's offered through the bus, so, uh, the bus does have, um. Several different programs to support folks who, who need it that are not, you know, that are not necessarily fixed routes. Um, so that is there.
Uh, that bus is handicap accessible, don't speak that, huh?
Um, I think that they have different buses, I, this is a little outside of my wheelhouse, it was kind of a high level. But I think they do have different, um, vehicles in the fleet that serve different purposes.
Yeah, they have wheelchair accessible buses.
I guess you have to plan on if you're gonna.
You do, yeah, yeah. Yep, you have to plan ahead, but it is there and essentially, um, there is marketing that will be coming, coming for the bus as well. Um, trying to get the word out about that, um, um, resource. And that's it.
Hey, thank you. Okay, public comments and concerns? Patty?
Uh, yeah, just. Two things, one, if. Where the town garage is now becomes a recreation place, where will the town garage end up? And where, where will, where is that site? That is being looked at, put a new garage down? Sorry, go ahead.
Kind of the other way around, like it's a town garage, and then the site becomes available. That's gonna force that there's like this.
Okay, but is there a site that's being looked at for a town garage, or will that just be rebuilt?
Well, there is, there's two other tentative sites that, um, have been identified. Uh, n- neither which. Neither which, does the town have any formal agreement, i.e. a potential sale, potential person to sale of the unit? So, at this point, I think, I think. I don't think we wanna disclose what sites we're talking about, but there are two other sites that are under consideration. Part of the scoping that, um, the engine, or the architectural firm that we've engaged. Um, are looking at those two other sites as well. Um, but as Alan said, it, you know, it may, if, if the. If the architectural firm says, oh, the site you have currently. You can accommodate what you, what you're, wanna put there. I think this board has gotta consider, will, will, will consider staying where they are.
And like, other one is, we talk about taking this contaminated soil and maybe putting it up at the firehouse or. Somewhere else, the first thing that comes to me is, years ago, we had the thermometer place up there and had to deal with that whole thing. And I don't think it's fair to the fire department either, but that's gonna send up some red flags in this town. Because, here we go again, we've got contaminated soil, we've gotta start all over again, been there, done that. I think it would be a concern.
Uh, what are we supposed to do? You know, I mean.
Many people who still live here, remind that. And so, it's, it's not, it doesn't go away.
Hopefully they'll understand that when it's gonna cost a lot, we have to approach them and say, those are our choices.
It's sold and put out there, but again, the first thing when you start talking about it, I'm saying, oh no. Been there, done that.
Yeah, that's the first thing I thought of, thermometer plant, myself, and I'm doing the same thing.
Yeah, would need to be totally contained.
Yeah, that's, that's something we'll work on, we got some.
Well, I know.
We gotta, we gotta find a plan, I mean, I can't. The rules and regulations has, has changed, uh, along with the dollars. From when the thermometer plant was here in the seventies, to now.
I think that's what you're gonna have come up as questions is.
Oh, yeah.
You know, what if?
Without a doubt. Yes.
That's a fact.
I am a complete novice when it comes to talking to the department that dropped this twelve hour surprise on us. And I'm sure this was already what was being considered, but I just wanted to encourage in the. Surprise of it and, and the, the likely costs that we push back on the board that set this rule in the motion right before our project. And ask them for lenience, grace, grandfathering, or guidance. And kinda put it, if possible, put it back in there, if, from a helpful perspective, put it back. Offer ourselves up as a use case of what happens, like, when this regulation, this new thing that you guys have legislated into. Being what, you know, so, in, in other words, as we're looking around and asking about what we do with it, maybe we ask them too. What precisely do you want us to do with it? And maybe, again, that might have just revealed my naivety when it comes to dealing with the state, but I just. If y'all are getting springy on us, y'all should explain it to us, and I'm encouraging us to put as much of that back into there.
Is that a possibility, or did you already talk?
Man, according to the project manager, and I have no, no reason to, to not believe him. He, he did push back. Um, what exactly he did, I don't know, but he said he, he pushed very hard. Uh, given the fact that, um. Like you said, it was eleven hour. And now all of a sudden, here's something that we hadn't talked about, and how long have we been talking about that, Rach?
Do we even know what success looks like, do they even know what success looks like?
No, but, you know, I was talking to Sen- Senator Williams this morning about a couple things that. He's kind of like, just so you know, this, this maybe had near way. So, I don't think there's a lot of thought sometimes, um. You know, I don't even know where this rule change generated from, whether it's federally driven, whether it's state driven. Um, but, you know, uh, Senator Williams was telling me this morning about. Some, some change that they, that they're talking about making and, and. And dumping it in the lap of mu- municipalities to oversee it and, with no funding, et cetera, et cetera. Which seems to be a fairly common practice, um. At least for my, my tenure being here, there's several things that, I'm like, wait, this is a state, well, why, why am I enforcing it?
We get to see the laboratories all the time and show us how innovative they can be, if they create whatever it is that.
But I can, I can talk to the project manager to see. If, you know, he may sound like you're wasting your breath if you're, if you think you're gonna.
Sounds like an unfunded mandate again. Hmm, they do that with the schools a lot, don't they, Patty?
Yes, they do.
We remember those days. Any other questions? Yes, on the back.
Uh, I apologize if I've missed this in a, in a previous meeting, but, um. Can you go over what option was chosen at the Tressel, and then the cost breakdown, who pays for what portion of that?
So, um. I, I think, I don't think this board ever had a formal vote on it, I think they just did it around the table, and I think this board was leaning towards. The, um. Uh, replacing the bridge with a longer span, um, bridge. Uh, this, it, it kinda came down to two viable options, one, if you remember, they were gonna lower the rail trail. Uh, and the expanded bridge, and the state, um, and the rail trail folks. Uh, didn't like the idea of lowering, um, the, the, that section of the, of the, of the, the trail itself. Only because they tried it, it upon the, the moil rail, and it was, it was disastrous and. You know, required a lot more, um, maintenance after event. Like I said, uh, is, we had that call with the state and. I mean, the, the comment I was getting is that it, it doesn't sound like the state really wants to do anything, now whether or not. The cost benefit analysis proves otherwise. Certainly, if the cost benefit analysis says that, you're not gonna be really, not really gonna do much for, um. For you, I, I, I know the state's gonna say, well, we're not doing anything. If it says otherwise, I don't know what they're gonna say.
Yeah, that's what, that's why I asked, I was involved in the, in the Loma Valley project years ago and, and. The funding came down in the last hour and paid for it, and a lot of it ended up being fundraising, vast, covered a huge portion of it. Through fundraising, and, and my concern here is, we're proactive and we're trying to make a difference here, but I'm afraid the, the cost come back in the town.
Um. I guess too early to say, I think ultimately. You know, ultimately, originally, when, when we brought the state into the conversation, when it. When I was like, wait a minute, it's that's kind of the state property, um, who's gonna pay for it? Um. Initially, the state seemed receptive. And, you know, what about, we don't really have the budget in it, how can we come up with the money? But when we had that phone call, it sort of, it seemed less than gigantic.
Yeah, that's what I thought you'd say. Okay, it's just a word of caution that I've seen before, and I'm afraid of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they use their money at other places other than preventing catastrophic events in the village of Pauline. That's a. Any other questions? Mary Sue, and then we'll get to you after, okay?
At the last meeting, the last regular meeting, um. The cost of the mower was, uh, set to be sixty-one thousand dollars. Was this the cost after the insurance payout was applied, or was that?
Um. No, the, actually, the, actually, the insurance payout, um. Was. It was actually a pretty good insurance payout. So we use some of those funds to buy the tractor. Um, we ended up having to pay a hauler because the hauler that was gonna do it. Um, in our, in our urging, he was gonna go down when, when they were calling for us, I had stormed. And we kinda said, you know, don't put your life on the line for, for tractor. And then his, his schedule got so full that we were like, we wanna get it up here and start using it, so we, we did pay a hauler. Twenty-five hundred dollars to haul it for us, um. And we still have funds left over from the insurance settlement that we intend hopefully. To keep in a, in an account earmarked specifically for the maintenance of this tractor. So that if something happens to the tractor, we have a lot of money to, to pay for it.
That sounds good.
It's not cheating line items. Not pulling line items.
Right.
Money from a line item to another. And line items stays there.
Okay, uh, I have a couple of questions, um. We had a special meeting on Wednesday, April second, can you just explain? Why you had to do some sort of expansion of the downtown, designated downtown boundaries?
So, um. In two, I'm not quite sure why they did this, but in two thousand fifteen. The designated downtown was expanded to incorporate almost all of the developed, um. Uh, campus parcel, they stopped, for some reason, they stopped just short of. The whole, the whole thing. Um, uh, regenerative land holdings. Re- re- asked the PDRC if they would be willing to, to expand it to incorporate their whole, their whole project.
Was that, were those the buildings outside the campus?
No.
Okay.
No, there was some buildings towards the back of the campus that weren't part of it. Um. Because I, I think, they think. Um, there could, they could be eligible for some active fifty exemptions.
Yes.
And, uh, I'm not giving them that advice, that's their, that's their own, um, opinion. Um. And the reason why we did a special meeting is because the, the state board. Who this proposal would go in front of was actually having their annual meeting, like. That's, that like next week, I think it was.
Okay.
Um, so we, the, for, in order to get it on their agenda, we sort of had to have a special meeting just for that purpose. Um.
Jamie was good.
Yeah, and Jamie Lee, um, actually helped. Put together the, the request and gathered up all the documentation. I don't know, did she indicate whether or not it was approved?
Um, I don't think they've had a meeting, the next time the community, community investment board, the. Board that oversees the downtown program meets is in fall of twenty twenty-four, so, um. Twenty twenty-five, um, so that is another reason that it, um, happened. At in this timeline, because the applicant would have had to wait another six months for it to happen, so we were able to respond.
And we only had one day or two before that deadline.
Yeah, it was, it was a very tight deadline, that, like, if you can get it to us by the state, we can get it on the next agenda.
That's good for comedy, so.
You had another one?
I do, I do, um. I know you were talking about, um, making more use of the town's website. And I think by adding more of the common information. Like a lot of the questions that fall against, um, regarding, um, transfer station in town. Whatever, and I was wondering too, if you can also put, um, now that it's approved, the, the local hazard mitigation plan on there. So.
Yeah, we can do that.
Again, just, these are just comments, um, and then just to remind folks that. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns is having an open meetings laws training webinar. On the sixteenth of April, it's from ten to eleven thirty in the morning. And, um. It is, uh, according to them, is trainings critical for elected and appointed members. Of all statutory municipal boards, commissions, and committees. As well as all committees appointed by select boards and other legislative bodies, um. You know, just by reading this stuff on the website is really informative with the open meeting law, but I think this will give folks. the opportunity to ask questions too about it. So I I think it's I'm I'm planning on popping in on that, too. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Yes, thank you.
What do you know?
In regard to the feral cat program, um, I was aware that some local veterinarians, and I'm not sure if the Humane Society, if you captured them, they would spay or neuter them, then they'd nick their ear. So you knew by sight that if you caught them again, that they'd already been done.
Uh huh.
But it was a great program. And then I've seen on Facebook, there's a couple of local folks that are actually looking to adopt feral cats. So.
Cat.
Yeah, I know.
Hard to catch. They don't go in and have a heart or easy.
Yeah.
It's it's kind of.
Just just the suggestion.
Yeah, I know, but it's difficult.
With the county.
It would be difficult for us to kind of, you know, round them up with everything that's going on. I mean, Paul's got twenty hats and.
I mean, essentially, the Humane Society said, don't bring them to me anymore.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in fact, they, um, at least the last time I talked to them about dogs, they don't even have a capacity for dogs. Um, so.
I know the poly vet does the same thing, nicks nicks on the dogs that go in there. She does the same thing with dogs, so she knows that they've gone in and got there. Because a lot of them are chipped or anything like that, so I'm done. Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be extremely difficult for the town manager to round them up and still do it.
Oh, I wasn't suggesting that Paul do it. I was just saying that somebody.
How can we do it? That's the thing.
I mean, we had a good I had a good agreement with that person because I give them my trap and they call me and say, I got one or I got two. But, you know, when I when I have nowhere to bring them, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, where do we go? That's a that's a bit of a question.
So, you know, and I said to the Humane Society, it's I'm either going to get beat up and strung up if I say leave them in the neighborhood.
Or neutered.
Or I get beat up and strung up if I say, oh, I'm just going to bring them to the vet and they're going to euthanize us.
Right.
Um, plus we'd have to pay to get them to the vet, too. That's another thing.
Right. Yeah, that's gonna be tough.
The taxpayer would have.
Well, I mean, right now, like if someone if someone brings a cat into the into the, um, vet clinic and they they had hit it with a car, for instance, and they have to euthanize it, the vet calls me and says, hey, you owe me a certain amount of dollars for euthanizing this cat that was that that we had to.
But it's not euthanizing, it's getting rid of them. They have to get them cremated. They don't have burial at the vet, so they have to put them somewhere. They can't go out and bury them. So that has them, they have to cremate them. And who pays for that? They pay for utilizing, but they can't pay to have them cremated. It's expensive. So it's this big circle, like who's at the town? People are going to say, okay, we're gonna pay a percentage to the vet to have these animals that we bring there euthanized. It's a big circle. It's 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 a lot more than some people think.
Yeah, we got something coming up that we got to really.
Yeah.
Gonna be tough.
Real quick, um, as this taxpayer would be okay with putting aside money to subsidize the nick and the, uh, spay slash neuter? Um, I'm with the and and not because Paul would be the one to do it, but just like have that same fund that the euthanizations are pulled from. Because if we don't do something, then run over a bunch of them. It's gonna get it. It has potential for the population to not just for them to get mad, but for all the things they eat to be damaged heavily as a result of their populations increasing, so.
Patty, you volunteering for this? What? You got your hand up?
No, I have a question. I have a comment. Um, regarding the cats, I know, like, for instance, North Avenue, there are several houses on there that they're just inundated with cats. At what point can you make the owner take care of it? Maybe they all started somewhere and.
That's all things, you know, we got to figure.
Cattle issue with getting dogs.
Yeah.
Don't have the registration. They don't have the registration, so they can't get registered and they can't afford either. But yeah, that was this vicious circle they've been through.
Yeah, so. They never went to there.
I probably shouldn't have brought up because we're gonna keep talking about the same stuff.
Sorry, think about it.
Yeah.
At least it's not we're not getting caught. Carol, what you got?
Do you finally have an answer on the eighty-three thousand some odd dollars on the HRA account where it was expended from the audit report?
No, in fact, the auditor basically said, I'm not talking to anybody until I get through tax season.
Doesn't sound good because that could possibly affect our whole bottom line, right? If they didn't pick up this eighty-three thousand dollar expense?
I mean, I know where it was expended. It was expended on a a separate line, but, um, I wanted some clarification from them and there's another thing that I'm working on.
Like you said, we have the two places where it was budgeted and nothing expended, so that's a lot of money.
Um, yeah, there's there's another thing that we're waiting to hear from them. Basically, so they said, they basically said, I'll I'll talk to you guys on the afternoon fifteenth.
Okay, that's tomorrow. So maybe we'll get an answer then.
Maybe.
Um, and one other thing I just want to say, on May third, I know it's Greenup Day, and probably Paul already knows this, the Little League Parade is scheduled for May third also, starting at three thirty, and the varsity softball game at the Pauli Elementary School is also Saturday after May third. Just so that everybody knows what's going on.
A little busy.
I believe they planned it to be down there for the.
They did, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think that means the Little League Parade is going to be later, though, right? I guess what you're saying.
Three thirty, we said, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody on? Nobody's got their hand up? Okay, a motion to, uh, sign the board orders.
Are we making motion to sign the board orders?
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We have to go into executive session for a contractual matter. Thank you, everyone.
One VSA section three thirteen eight one making.
Somebody want to second his motion?
Second it. All right.
VSA section three thirteen eight one eight. I didn't know.
The board?
Thank you, Alan.
All in favor? Motion carry.
In eight oh seven, Cheryl made a motion to leave executive session. Alan Glenn Burnell. Second motion passed, but all in favor. Someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn?
Oh, no action taken.
No action taken. Who, do I hear a second?
I can.
All in favor? And the opposed or done?